Thank you to everyone for just giving us a moment or two while we work out a few technical challenges. We'll be right with everybody. All right, everyone. It is 1:12 PM on this Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, and I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And now, I would like to ask for roll call.
Can I just do this without a net? Yeah, you know, I got it. Thank you. There it is. My apologies. Good evening. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay. Trustee Christine Hall.
Present.
Okay. Vice President Adam Mayberry is here. Trustee Nicolette.
Good afternoon.
President Beth Smith.
Here.
Trustee Colleen Westlake.
Here.
Trustee Alex Woodley.
Here.
And student Annie Batavia. Batavia, thank you, is here. We have a coram, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. I think just about everybody in this room realizes we are not in our home board office. We're being hosted today by UNR, and we're incredibly grateful for that. And there is one person in particular that I would like to bring attention to and to extend our thanks to. It is the University of Nevada Executive Vice President and Provost Dr. Jeff Thompson. So Dr. Thompson's been with the University of Nevada since 1991. He joined in the Physics Department, and then prior to being appointed to the Executive Vice President and Provost position, Dr. Thompson served as the Chair of the Physics Department, Associate Dean of the College of Science, and the Dean of College of Science. And so, we're incredibly grateful for UNR for allowing us to host today's special meeting here. We're incredibly grateful to the Provost for being here as well. And so, we were wondering if you could please lead us in the pledge. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so, Dr. Thompson, while we have you here, of course, we hope that you will carry our gratitude to President Sandoval for allowing today's meeting to happen here on your beautiful campus. And we were wondering if we could take a point of privilege and invite you to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We are so extremely proud to be hosting the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Washoe County School District. I want to thank you for all you do for our community, for our students, for our families in Washoe County. But I also want to thank you for all the collaborations that you do with the University of Nevada. We're very proud of all the work we do together, and you are fantastic host and collaborator for us, and we want to thank you for that. For those of you who have not been on our campus before, welcome. We'd love to have you on our campus. And for those of you who are members of the Wolf Pack and graduates of the university, welcome home, and of course, go Pack. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Thompson. That now closes item 1.03. We move on now to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nu'umu, Northern Paiute, Ni'wi, Western Shoshone, and N'uwu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you, everyone. That now closes item 1.04 and Section 1. It's in entirety. And we move on now to the main event, our Section 2. These are the items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And we open now with item 2.01, the review and discussion by the Board of Trustees regarding the applications received to fill the vacancy on the Board in District C created by the resignation of trustee Joseph Rodriguez, who was elected to the Sparks City Council, and possible action to select up to five candidates to be interviewed by the Board from among the following legally-qualified applicants. Jason Bushy, Felipe Esquimia, Marcus Hodges, Monica Lehman, Tamara Oswald, Bruce Parks, James Phoenix, Tracy Thomas, and Timothy Zisk. The character, competence, and misconduct of any applicant may be considered by the Board per Nevada Revised Statute NRS 241-033, and administrative action may be taken against any applicant per NRS 241.034. This is an item for possible action. So, as we move forward, the first note I'd like to make is that, of course, that agenda item was written prior to the withdrawal of one of our applicants. So, I would like to note for the community that Ms. Tracy Thomas voluntarily withdrew her application on January 1st, 2025, so the Board will no longer be considering her. And I'm going to go over how this next portion is actually going to take place. Very, very familiar for anyone who has seen the application process for a trustee appointment in the past. So, each applicant will have an opportunity for up to five minutes to address the Board on any topic that they would like, appealing to the Board and the community on why they should move forward as a finalist. Now, following that time, and you certainly do not need to take all five minutes, but you have up to five minutes. When your portion is complete, the trustees may have clarifying questions. These are not open-ended questions. They're meant for brief answers. There may be a question on your application, perhaps something that you've shared in your statement, and it may not be the same question for every person, and there may be times where there are no questions for any of the candidates. But there may be clarifying questions. I will address that when it actually occurs, and we would ask if there is a clarifying question on your experience or something that you've said to just answer that briefly. To all of our community members who are watching from home right now, this is being livestreamed, and we are accepting public comment through publiccomments@washoeschools.net. If you are following along and you do have some thoughts, there is absolutely still time to share that with our Board. We will be taking a break prior to any voting occurring, and that will give an opportunity not just for our public commenters in this room, but for anyone that maybe is following along and would like to email their thoughts to us in real time. We will be doing that. So, the next part is probably one of the time-honored traditions. We have JJ Batchelder. She's our recording secretary, and in the appointment process, there is something affectionately known as JJ's Cup. It is very non-scientific, but it's the most fair way possible. We do not call you up in alphabetical order or reverse alphabetical order. JJ simply pulls a name from the cup. Now, as we go through each and every one of these steps, I will be pausing at intervals to make sure that everyone at every point in this process, both at home watching and in this room, are absolutely clear on every single step that we're taking. Once all of our applicants have the opportunity to speak and we've completed that, there will not be deliberation by this Board at that point. We will immediately go to public comment. The reason is, we cannot possibly have fully-formed opinions without hearing from our public first. At that point, it'll come back to this Board, potentially for deliberation, and then a ranking process, which again, will take place in public in front of everyone, where trustees will be asked to give a top candidate three points, their next candidate two, and then a third candidate one point among all of the applicants we have here. We will take a break. Those points will be calculated, and when we return, those will all be publicly stated, not just by how each trustee voted, but also point totals for each of the applicants. And again, I will be going through this every single step of the way so that everyone has total, clear, and transparent understanding of every step that we take while we're doing it. And so, on that note, and seeing no questions from my colleagues, we will ask JJ to please pull the first name from the magic cup.
Just let me clarify. The record is I've been contacted by staff that this is actually not being live-recorded. The open meeting law does not require that it be live-recorded. However, if folks wanted to send in public comment to the public comment email address, that could still be, that is still available, and the trustees will get those.
Thank you very much for that point. I thought that we were livestreaming, so thank you very much for clarifying. All right.
Monica Lehman.
Welcome, Ms. Lehman. Feel free to get yourself situated, and then when you are ready, feel free to start.
Good afternoon. My name is Monica Lehman, and I am honored to stand before you today as a candidate for the Washoe County School District Board District C. As a mother and active member of our community, and someone who deeply values the future of our children, I am excited to have the opportunity to contribute to the growth and success of our school district. I have been proud U.S. citizen for over 10 years, and during that time, I have fallen in love with this country, unique constitution, and its dedication to freedom and opportunity for all. These values are at the heart of my mission and the lens through which I view the future of education. My personal foundation and priorities are rooted in faith, family, and the principles that make this nation great. I believe that public education should reflect these values and that we must ensure our students are equipped to thrive, not just in school, but in life. I choose to dedicate my time and energy to my children's education, prioritizing their success over my own career. With a degree in business, I could have pushed a different path, but instead, I devoted myself to supporting their growth, exposing them to multiple languages, three, and diverse educational systems. It's through these hands and experience that I have come to understand the importance of quality education in shaping the leaders of tomorrow. Now, I am standing here because I believe that it's time to take action for our students in Washoe County. There is much work to be done, and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves. First, we must address the concerning state of education in Nevada. Right now, Nevada is ranking 50 out of 50 states in terms of education. This means that nearly half of our students are not performing at grade level in core subjects like math and English. The situation is unacceptable and does not prepare our children for the competitive, high-paying career they deserve. If elected, my top priority will be improving academic standards in Washoe County. I will advocate for more I will advocate for more rigorous educational programs that challenge students and prepare them for the future. I will also push for the U.S. Constitution to be taught from elementary through high school, ensuring that our students understand their rights and responsibilities as citizens. By going back to the basics, we can equip them to be smart, free, and ready to lead. Second, we must address the ongoing teacher shortage in Nevada. The state is facing a crisis in retaining qualified teachers. This is critical because our teachers are the foundation of student success. If elected, I will work tirelessly to protect the professional integrity of our educator, ensuring, ensure they receive the support and resources they need, and advocate for retention and professional development programs that keep our best and brightest in the classroom. Third, we must focus on the core academic subject. Reading, writing, and arithmetic are the building blocks of education. Unfortunately, too often, these areas are neglected in favor of other priorities. As a trustee, I will push for a return to teaching these essential subjects with rigor and clarity, ensuring that all students master the basics that will serve them throughout their lives. I will also work to increase transparency within the district. We must hold administrators accountable for how resources and finances are allocated, ensuring that every dollar is spent wisely to benefit students and teachers. Lastly, I am proud to represent the diverse, diverse community of District C, including the large Latino population here in Reno. I believe that every child deserves an education that meets their unique needs and helps them reach their fullest potential. I am committed to creating policies that support the holistic development of our students and ensure that they are prepared for success in life, not just in the classroom. Well, thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lehman. You did a wonderful job, and it's always the hardest to go first. So thank you for doing that. I'll just check both ways. I don't see any lights on for clarifying questions. So thank you. No, I don't see any lights on for any clarifying questions, so I will say thank you so much on behalf of the board. Thank you.
Bruce Parks.
Welcome, Mr. Parks. Feel free to get yourself settled. We will not start the timer until you're ready.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, good afternoon, Board. There are many of you that know me, you've seen me before. I have at times been rather outspoken about some of my views of what the Board of Trustees for Washoe County School District are involved in. Well, the simple answer to that is because I care. I wouldn't show up to school board meetings if I didn't have the best interests of Washoe County School District at heart and the future of our children. I firmly believe that as a community member, it is incumbent on me, as a citizen, if I see that there's a challenge that should be addressed that is not, that I must bring it to your attention. How do you do that? Well, you stand up, you speak up, but first you have to show up. And I do that. And we have some challenges in our school district that I relish the opportunity to work with this Board to come up with solutions for some of those challenges, from our academic standards, our chronic absenteeism, a myriad of other problems that we can solve. It is incumbent on this Board to seek those solutions wherever they may come from. I can offer solutions. And I would relish the opportunity to work with you to solve a lot of these problems. It goes without saying that our students are the future of Nevada, and this country, for that matter. And I believe that we can do a much better job of equipping them for the future that they choose. We want to bring industry into Nevada. We have to have an available workforce to entice those industries here. As you see on my resume, I retired from security work. That was at the Amazon facility in the industrial park. And I saw firsthand what happens when industries go out of state for employees. We have the people here for those jobs. We just have to do a better job of equipping them for those jobs. And we can do that. Again, I very much would love the opportunity to work with this Board to not only bring Nevada out of where we stand compared nationally, but also, that notwithstanding, we have an obligation, this Board has an obligation, to the future of our students, our community, and this country. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. I'm looking at my colleagues. I don't see any lights on for clarifying questions, so we will thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Timothy Zisk.
Welcome, Mr. Zisk. Feel free to come up, get yourself settled, and we will not start the timer until you're ready.
I'm ready. First, I'd like to thank the Board for all the work we do. I read all your bios recently, and everybody's super-qualified. And I've also typically looked at all the applicants' bios and information submitted. We have good talent applicants, so I wish them all luck. So first, about me. My name's Tim Zisk. I'm a retired electrical engineer, but most of my career I worked in project management. And in the civilian side, I worked for GE and ABB and some other big companies. And my last job was up at Hurlaubang at the Army Base. I'm also a retired Navy reservist. Did 30 years in the Navy Reserve, one tour in Iraq, two tours in Afghanistan. And even worse, after I retired, I decided to substitute teach. So I did a lot of substitute teaching before the pandemic. I did, it's focused on ROTC. So I got to know some kids, spent a lot of times at North Valleys, doing that for the first year because they were short of teacher. So substitute teaching taught me a lot about the kids in the system. I also did some elementary to try that out, and some middle schools, so I got to know the kids and a lot of teachers. And I just resigned doing that a couple weeks ago so I could run for the seat. So my wife and I live up in Rancho Haven, which is way up North Valleys. And we've been there for 14 years. We're not native, born Nevadans, so that's a deficit there. I have two grandkids in the system. They're about 10 and 13, I think. So they'll be, they'll be in the middle schools. Right now, they're homeschooling, but they'll probably be in the middle schools next year. And my wife Kathy, of 45 years, is a teacher in Area B. So that might recuse me for some votes down the road if I was selected. So my intent is to fulfill the term of C for Mr. Rodriguez. And if I did get selected, I would meet with him initially, first off, to see what he had going on, what he knows, what he learned about the area, so I could carry forward some of his priorities through the rest of his term. I really want to focus on C. I want to meet him. And my focus, like many of the applicants I read about and you guys, is on safety of the students and teachers and classroom sizes. And especially in middle schools, because I know middle school is a very transient place for kids. A lot's going on in middle schools. It's a very tough place to be right now. I've substituted in the grade schools, went very well. Middle schools is really challenging, and high schools went very well. So that's kind of my initial priorities. Let me see. Why I thought I might be a good fit is because I'm a calm, thoughtful person. I do research, I understand things before I make decisions. I know a little bit about the schools from subbing. I also, because I was trying to help the community, I volunteered to, or I signed up to be a bus driver for a year. So I did that for about a year until I got cancer and had to go get surgery. So I lost that. But now I'm healthy, but I don't want to go back to bus driving. But I did special ed bus driving for a year, so I got to know the transportation system really well. I was really impressed with it and loved doing that. And this is not school-related. For, for the recent election, I also signed up as a poll worker, where I got to meet and say hello to 1,000 people or so as they came through the polls, and I took them in for processing. So that was good to get to know the community in the North Valleys and see them face-to-face and live through it calmly and all that stuff. Okay, about my career in the Navy. I was in the Navy SEBs, which is Construction Forces, so I know a lot about construction, project management, which I thought would be valuable for the Board for all the projects you guys look at. I'm also an Iraq veteran, as I said, and Afghan, and came away from Iraq with a Bronze Star from the Marine Corps for the hard work I did there. Professionally, I graduated at Youngstown State University from Ohio with an electrical engineering degree. I worked in high tech and low tech throughout my career. I spent 10 years at GE as a project materials manager. And GE, if you know anything about GE, is very Six Sigma, so I know a lot about the Six Sigma stuff. And my priorities, as I said, is safety for students and teachers. That's the biggie. Class sizes, I'm going to really focus on Area C and make sure I get to know that area really well. And then I'm going to broaden my wings a little bit and get to learn more about some of the bigger issues the whole system deals with. Let me see if I left anything out. I think that's it. I want to thank you for the time and wish luck on your efforts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zisk. I don't see any clarifying questions, but on a personal note, I will say congratulations for being able to survive.
James Phoenix.
Welcome, Mr. Phoenix. Feel free to get yourself situated, and we will hold the timer until you're ready.
Can you hear me all right? Greetings, Washoe County School Board of Trustees and staff. I will introduce myself in my native language to honor my ancestors. I am a native of the Washoe County School District, and I am a native of the Washoe County School District. I said hello, my name is Martin Fong. My parents, and I thank their heavenly father for everything with blessings and amen. So good afternoon, everyone. I first want to thank everyone here and online for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is James Phoenix, I go by JJ, by the way. I am a member of the Pima Lake Paiute Tribe. I also reside upon the Pima Lake Paiute Indian Reservation, which is within Washoe County District C in Sec Cliff. I grew up in Washoe County. I attended Washoe County Schools. I graduated from Pima Lake High School, and all of my four children and most of my family graduated from Washoe County Schools. I am a graduate from the Truckee Meadows Community College with a degree in Associate Applied Science Law Enforcement. I have a degree from the University of Phoenix Reno Campus in Criminal Justice Administration, and I graduated from the University of Nevada Reno and have a Master's in Justice Management. Go Pack. I'm a retired Reno police officer after 25 years. I retired as a Lieutenant Colonel, and I am a veteran of the Marines and a veteran of the Marines and Nevada Army National Guard, serving a total of 28 years. Why am I interested in serving on the Washoe County School Board of Trustees? There are several reasons why. I consider myself a product of Washoe County School District, the system where I grew up here. I went to school here, I have family here, I'm a native, have native community ties here, and I had a police and military career here. And as a product of Washoe County, I want to give back the best way that I can while serving as a trustee. I want to be the voice for the parents and the students as, as we balance their needs and concerns and administrative mandates and goals, so we have to tie it in together. I hope to have the opportunity to represent the school district by serving the students, family, staff, and our community in a leadership role as a trustee. Moreover, I understand the magnitude and the responsibility that is required of a trustee, whereas I can engage with students, family, staff, and connect with them, and learn what their needs are, and call to action those needs in collaboration with the Board of Trustees and the parents and the students. I would serve in the role of a trustee where I'm a major contributor towards policy and decision-making, that is in accordance with state and federal laws and Nevada administrative codes, and deep dive in the approval of the budget to better our schools and maintain balanced governance oversight of operations that ensure equality and safety for all students, family, and staff. I believe with my experience as a former chairman of the Board of Education for the Pima Lake Junior and Senior High School, served on the Pima Lake Paiute Tribal Council and as the chairman for the tribe, and currently serve at the national level as a co-chair for the Veterans Committee for the National Congress of American Indians, and serve at the state level as a member of the Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordination Council for Washoe County. This demonstrates I have knowledge, experience, and I am committed to serving. Though more importantly, I have taken the grassroots approach as a substitute teacher for the district to better learn and understand how to serve our Washoe County School District teachers and staff. You don't know unless you're in there. Now, with all that being said, everything that I just said, what does it really come down to? You know, I want to serve as a member of this Board for the reasons I mentioned, and it would be an honor serving and giving back to the community that I grew up in. And having the opportunity to learn and grow and engage with students, family, and teachers at this level is a privilege. How will I do that? By being transparent, real, available, and by using my professional skills and attributes to effectively communicate and express my points of view respectfully and candidly in discussions for betterment of our community as a member of the Washoe County School District team to make those good, sound decisions. Therefore, in closing, thank you for taking the time to listen to me as to why I want to serve and why I am qualified. If selected, I look forward to meeting and working with the Board the best way I know how. I am committed to the mission and its significance for our students and parents. Thank you for your time. Pishat'you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Phoenix. And seeing no lights on for clarifying questions, thank you for presenting yourself to our Board.
Thank you.
Jason Bushy.
Welcome, Mr. Bushy. I'm going to say the same thing to everyone. Feel free to get yourself settled in, and we will not start until you're ready.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Board, and thank you, community. My name is Jason Bushy. I am honored to have the opportunity to apply to the open position on the Washoe County School Board. I am deeply committed to the education and well-being of our children and look forward to the possibility of serving the community that I have called home my whole life. I was born and raised here in Reno and have always had a strong connection to my community. My father has been the pastor of a fellowship community church in the valley for over 25 years, where the importance of loving God, loving people, and serving others has been the building blocks of who I am. I was blessed with the ability to serve our country in the United States Army just four days after I turned 17. Though wounded in combat in Iraq in 2008, I was able to continue serving my country and completed my active-duty commitment. Returning to Nevada, I further contributed in the Nevada Army National Guard. My military service ultimately culminated in being medically retired in 2018 due to wounds I had incurred in combat over my career. Beyond my military service, I am proud to call myself a devoted husband and father. My wife Sarah, who's here, and I have cherished, my wife Sarah and I have cherished over 13 years of marriage, and we are blessed with our 12-year-old son Jacob and our twin three-year-old daughters Evelyn and Reagan. My interest in serving on the Washoe County School Board is driven by a passionate desire to serve our community and address the unique challenges our school faces today. I believe that responsible leadership and informed decision-making are crucial to nurturing the potential of our youth. I am committed to listening to the diverse needs and concerns of the community and to fostering positive change that will benefit our children's educational experiences. fostering positive change that will benefit our children's educational experiences. I believe a bright, I believe a bright, excuse me, I think it was Mark Twain who said there's two types of speakers, those that are nervous and those who are liars. So, I believe I bring a unique perspective as I have personally experienced the Washoe County school system, charter school system, and homeschooling. I have reviewed the list of applicants for the open position and I'm afraid you all have a very difficult decision to make as there are many wonderful and able candidates to consider for this position. I will say, if you are looking for experience, I am not your candidate. If you are looking for a politician, I am not your candidate. If you are looking for a member of the community who is a team player with a passion to serve and a vested interest in the success of our youth, I will not let you down. I ask for your support and your trust as we work together to create a brighter future for our children and our community. Thank you for considering me for this position.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bushy. And I see no lights on for clarifying questions. We appreciate you coming after to share your story with us. Thank you.
Marcus Hodges.
Welcome, Mr. Hodges. Thank you so much for being with us today. We look forward to hearing from you when you are ready to begin.
Board of Trustee members, thank you for your time in this matter. My name is Marcus Hodges and again, thank you for your time here and for giving us all the opportunity to come and present us as being the best candidates. It's a good feeling. I've been a member of this community for 35 years. Over that time, met my wife here, got married, raised a family. The two successes, not all of my kids, but the two that I can say right now that are almost all the way out of the school system have gone through and are, one is currently at UNR and is dual-majoring in classes and majors that she developed a passion for in high school from teachers. Amazing things that we never considered she would do, opportunities given to her just even from field trips to various areas. Again, facilitated by the teachers, by these administrators. My second child, so close to graduating from high school, I'm really, really happy with it. He's been a little more of a challenge. He is my duly exceptional one. With him, I've gotten experience not just in honors programs and how great it can be when they show their intelligence, but also the difficulties that students can have due to disabilities, the necessity for IEPs or 504s. I've been through a lot of those meetings. And I understand the difficulties that that does provide for the school, for the teachers, challenges that go on there, and of course, the legal requirements that are attached with those. But luckily for him, he's been offered the honors college here, so again, it's a nice So going through, dealing with those issues, I understand the difficulties. My wife and I, we've been through so many of these meetings and the struggles that can happen dealing with the fringe students is definitely something that I look at as something that is important to me. I understand how they can have issues fall through the cracks and we have needs to support our teachers and our staff for this, along with other programs, expanding our programs, expanding options available for them. Throughout my professional career here in Nevada, 24 years over that, a little more than that now, as in law enforcement, a lot of that was as a criminal investigator. Biggest thing I learned from that process is when I'm walking into a situation, I don't know everything. I am not the expert in the room on every single matter. It's why there's a board here. It's why we all bring our own individual knowledge and experience into this. We provide input. We rely on the people that are legal experts, our counsel, because I don't want to go to law school. And because of that, one of the things I learned in my career was to educate myself, to ask the questions, not just to assume what somebody's actions, motivations, what the standard practice is. What do they do? What is their intention? How are they handling things? Everything is a unique situation, just like our students that are running through our school district. I believe strongly that while college is a very strong necessary focus in our secondary school system, our continuing advancements in the expansion of the CTE programs is invaluable for the success of our students and for the community in general and provides a nice focal point for their future and everyone can get through, not necessarily just, okay, you're going to go to college, but here's a career path, here's education, here is a thing that you can learn to then be successful as a community member. Honoring the students and their journeys, it's like whether it leads them to college, technical school, or directly into the workforce, it's one of the most rewarding jobs that I can imagine to help those students along. You know, balancing the needs and opinions of the various sectors and communities can be a delicate situation. I know that the board is unable to please everyone all the time. People are going to not be happy with your decisions. Luckily for me, over the course of my career, I've developed a very thick skin. So I understand that when the board has to make some decisions and we move forward with it, it's not necessarily a personal attack upon me or any of us. It's just we can't please everyone. But I'm willing to discuss with the various people that I would represent and try to come to the best conclusion we can legally, fiscally, and supporting our teachers and our administrative staff. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Seeing no clarified questions, we will say thank you so much for sharing your story and your history with us.
Felipe Escamilla.
Welcome.
Yeah, like tortilla. One way I recommend is to everybody knows tortillas. I wanted to take time, thank you, to just congratulate everyone else in the room and all the applicants. I think the board is in a very good position knowing that there's a very passionate and capable applicant experience. They'll have easy decisions once this is all said and done. And then I want to thank you all for this opportunity to share what drives me beyond my resume, which we all have now publicly available. As investigative journalist, I saw the inner workings of government and I was part of the institutions that held the powerful accountable and gave a voice to the voiceless. Through that, I saw firsthand the power and importance of education in all ranges of public life. Now, working for a nonprofit online education organization that provides a free, world-class education to anyone, anywhere, I witnessed firsthand the transformative power in public school classrooms. It's about fostering a love of learning, instilling a growth mindset, and giving teachers and learners the innovative tools to succeed and achieve the highest levels of proficiency. In both roles that I've had professionally, I've had an opportunity to see and tell thousands of stories. And one that I always remember, and I always get emotional because it hits so hard, is the story of Mia, a high school student in Florida who scored high enough on her SAT in order to graduate, at the SAT score being a requirement in Florida for her graduation. It is an emotional moment, still touches me to this day. Mia called her mom, who only spoke Spanish because Mia is a first-generation student. They celebrated the hard work that Mia put into her own education. She had the tools to succeed, but we know learning and success isn't always demonstrated through tests and widely-used assessments. And that includes my own education journey, which included a high school internship through a school-to-career program through the NBC station in San Diego that launched my 20-year journalism career in television news. And that underscores the career, the importance of career and technical education and the public school education that can be applied in the workforce. And that's why I'm here today, because this story includes all of you and my six-year-old daughter, who's a first-grade student here in Washoe. She's at Bohatch Elementary. We all have firsthand opportunity to be a part of creating, developing, and fostering a lifelong learner in her and to thrive in our public school system and our society beyond that. I'm invested in her success, but no much more than any other student in this school district. I want every student to have the same equal and equitable opportunities that my daughter should have. I understand the school board's trustee role in creating a supportive learning environment. Having served in the Superintendent's Family Action Committee prior to Superintendent Ernst, which I highly recommend that program being extended further on, and even the search committee that chose, that guided the board's decision in her election prior to Superintendent Ernst. In relation to that, trustee's role in relation to the superintendent and the trustee, that's a collaborative dynamic. I also understand that this role of trustee is one that is dictated through the Nevada revised statutes and I appreciate the structure and the law and order that is designed to ensure student success. Within that dynamic, it's crucial to prioritize our teachers as they are the backbone to our schools and the first line in caring for and educating our children and students. We must ensure they feel valued and they have the resources to excel. This includes competitive salaries, ongoing professional development, manageable workloads, classroom dynamics, teacher retention, and of course, access to technologically advanced tools, learning tools. With that in consideration, I believe in a fully holistic approach where the school board, superintendent, teachers, parents, and community work together towards student success. We must foster a strong sense of community within our schools, parents, teachers, and wider community, should feel like all of us are participating in this learning process of our students. Creating and fostering that is one of the reasons why I've served as the vice president of my daughter's school's BFO for the last two years. Now, my application to this trustee role is not so much professional goal as it is a personal one. I'm committed to creating a safe, emotionally safe and physically safe learning environment where every student reaches their full potential. And I believe there's no better place for that here in the public schools in northern Nevada. So with that, I thank you all for your time and I do look forward to an opportunity to answer some more direct questions about my intent and hopes for my position as part of the team that will serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Escamilla. Seeing no lights on from my colleagues, we say I appreciate you bringing yourself for consideration for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Tamara Oswald.
Welcome, Ms. Oswald. We appreciate you being here. Take your time.
So I had technical difficulties this morning as well, so it's, um, I'm Tamara Oswald. I have, you guys have my resume now. I was thinking I had to still have the candidate status. Hello. I am a mom of two adult children and I have two grandchildren who are reaching out in Washoe County District. So I have a little bit of investment. I worked here as a special education teacher for a while and I decided to go ahead and open my own preschool so that I could catch kids when they were younger to learn to love learning. That has been such a blessing to be able to see the lights go on and see them spark up. And I think I've only had two where I was like a little worried, but then when they got out of my program and went into Washoe County, they excelled. I was like, yes! So that makes me happy. Also, I just got my ministry degree, Bachelor's in Ministry. I'm working on a master's in business ministry because I'm a lifelong learner. I love learning and I just think that when we can have that put into our children, it would be, they would be able to come up in our system and just excel. I'm also a life coach and I work on marriage recovery. And you all know, that has its own set of challenges. So being able to communicate and navigate conversations when there's conflict or issues going on is a very good skill to have, especially when you're working with the public and you want to make sure that everybody's pleased and you know that they're not all going to be pleased. My biggest heart goes out to the teachers. The teachers are so good at what they do. We have so many good teachers. And to have the support that they need, because they're not perfect, nobody is. But I think a lot of people come in thinking that they're perfect and then when they mess up, it brings on a lot of negative energy. So I would like to see more, no matter who gets the position, more teacher support. I think family involvement is very important. We used to do meetings with families so that we can get their opinions and things like that. I think that would be a wonderful thing to do again. And I know in different areas we have that, different areas we don't, just to have it pretty much across the board. Because if families are involved, children's are going to feel better and safer to learn. Communication was wraparound. Oh, I think the wraparound effect. You know, as a foster parent, they had this wraparound system years ago, and I think they still have it, where they just wrap the whole family, give them the supplies they need, the support they need, so that they can really excel together and learn how to work with teachers, learn how to work with their children, work with their community, and feel wanted, loved, and cared for. Because when the families feel safe and cared for, the kids feel safe and cared for. And thank you. My name is Tamara. My first time doing this, so sorry if I'm a little shaky.
Well, thank you so much. Great job. We all comfortably understand that this can be a challenging process. And I should probably mention at this point that many of us sitting up here at one point or another went through this as well. So we appreciate the bravery of every community member coming forward and thank you so much. Seeing no lights on from my colleagues, we appreciate you presenting yourself to our board and to the community.
Madam President, that's all of them.
All right. So here's what we'll do next. Again, some of these steps I've already shared earlier, but since we do have new community members who have joined, prior to there being any deliberation or any ranking, we will now be moving on to public comment because it is imperative that we hear from our public prior to forming any final opinions on any of these applicants. And so, JJ, I will ask for you to please introduce our public commenters. Just as a reminder to everyone, we don't have the screens around us. We do have the rules of public comment printed on the agenda, also on the card, and then each speaker has up to three minutes as well. So the standard rules for decorum that we use at the main district office are also in force again today.
Todd Bailey.
Welcome, Mr. Bailey.
It's time for new leadership on the Washoe County. It's time for new leadership on the Washoe County School Board. And thank you to all the applicants. I think whoever isn't selected, there should be an effort to invite them to serve on a committee of the school district because you have a lot of upcoming leadership qualities here and I think there's places for all of them. It's going to be a difficult decision. The Committee to Fix Washoe Schools has researched each candidate for the vacant District C seat on the Washoe County School Board to the best of our ability to determine the finalists. These are the committee's recommendations for the finalists for District C. Jason Bushy, former candidate for the Nevada Legislature in District 32. This position requires passion. Anyone who's going to dedicate their time and resources to a political campaign has enough passion to sit on this nonpartisan political board. Monica Lehman, also a former candidate for the School Board District G. She not only has the experience, but she has great experience in financial matters and operations. This board often deals with budgetary issues, long-term planning, and she has expertise in these areas, regardless of any language difficulty. She could be useful on this board or on a committee that deals with these things. Tamara Oswald. She's an expert in childhood development. She's a small business owner. She's been in the community and she understands what it is to build consensus. Bruce Parks. The Washoe County School Board needs one skeptic, okay? You do. You can't just silence skepticism and get to a good place. You need at least one. You need at least one. And Mr. James Phoenix. You know, land acknowledgements are empty without real action. And President Smith, you've been a champion of that since July of 2023, okay? This is your opportunity to close the loop. You have James Phoenix, served our country, former Reno Police Department Officer, served as a tribal chairman for the Paiute Tribe out of Pyramid Lake, and also served as a board member on their middle school and high school. So here is the candidate ultimately to beat, because we've all agreed on what's in your land acknowledgement. And so she absolutely should be one of the finalists for District C. All five of these candidates are the most qualified to serve on Washoe County School Board to represent District C, and all five should proceed to the July 14 finalist consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey.
John Appolito.
Welcome, Mr. Appolito.
Hi, my name is John Appolito. I'm a former K-12 teacher. I'm with currently Protective Additive Children. You can find 1,500 of us on Facebook at Protective Additive Children. And you can also look at our website, protectiveadditivechildren.org. And that talks mostly about Infinite Campus and all the data that's stored forever about your children and shared with others. And that's via Infinite Campus. And you can check that out at protectiveadditivechildren.org. I've been coming to these meetings for 14 years, I think, and they've changed a lot over the years. And one of the biggest issues that I see right now is that even though there's seven people up there, maybe six today, the votes are always, almost always the same. Seven to zero, seven to zero, seven to zero, or six to one. One of the things that the speaker before me said is what I think is the most important thing, is to get somebody on the board who challenges, who thinks differently. I think one of the reasons we're in such a bad spot, and I know there's a lot of great things going on in the district. I've had four kids go through the district. All of them did well. Actually, they're all in college now, two are graduate school. We need somebody who thinks differently, and we need someone who will speak up. And I see everyone up here almost, most of the time, when they're not texting or saying the same things and doing the same things. We need someone who's going to speak differently. And that person would be Bruce Parks. I don't know if he has a chance to get on this board, but I think he should. I think that's just about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Appolito.
The board received emails from Kay Werning, Jackie Shelton, Bruce Foster, Jamie Vaughn, Joanne Bergamoni, and Kay McCollin Nichols.
Thanks, JJ. Before we bring it back to the dais, can we confirm if any public comment came into the public comment email while we were in the meeting?
No additional comments have come in.
Do you have public comment to offer? Absolutely. Okay. We can get you a card? Let's
I have Mr. Edwards for 3.01. Did you want to speak on this item?
So we will have closing public comment, and then we have public comment for this item. If you absolutely come on up. If the intention was for the public comment on this item, please feel free.
I know I have this blank opportunity to make public comment whenever I have time. Yeah, my name's Roger Edwards. I'm a, I don't know, 50-plus-year resident in Washoe County. My two girls, two of my three girls went through the Washoe County School District. I now have eight grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, but that's not the problem. My problem is all these candidates are wonderful, but nobody spoke to the fact of our rating as a school board in this country. We are number 50. And I don't know, that should have been reason number one for them to be up here and wanting to be on this board, to change that. Of course, it's by raising the educational standards of our students, which is critical. But you have to focus on any facet of how we change our ranking. You know, negative, negative, I don't know, ratings are way more than just a number. They're how the rest of the country looks at Washoe County. I spent my entire life in public service, a 37-year disabled Air Force veteran. I've been there and done that. I put myself out there on your boards. Eight years on a planning commission, 20 years on the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board. I'm a public servant. I would have ran for this job, except I don't believe I'm medically able. But you know, your rankings are more than just a number. And that should have been, first thing, that every one of these candidates brought up and did not.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. All right, so again, just want to double-check. No emails have come in since you left in the meeting?
No, and I have no additional cards for this item.
Very good. And then no one else that's out there had the intention of giving public comment on this item? Okay. Fantastic. Well, then, based on that, we will go ahead and close the public comment for this item. Now, prior to us moving on to the ranking of the finalists, which is using a point system, there is an opportunity for the board members to offer thoughts to the candidates, discussion, deliberation. That precludes when we do the ranking, and I, again, will walk everybody through every step of the way here. So what I'd like to do is open it up for the board and just say thank you so very much for every single community member who presented themselves for this opportunity. This is not an easy process to go through. It's a vulnerable experience to go through in front of the public and this board, and it is always honorable when you present yourself in service to your neighbors. I would also like to point out that this is an incredibly talented group of applicants. These characteristics are not a sum total of all of you, but there are some key points that I wanted to share. I did spend exhaustive time on every single packet, and among all of our finalists, we have four military veterans, two of whom are Bronze Star recipients, three Washoe County School District educators, one who was a member of our full-time staff, and then also two guest teachers. We also have two spouses of current WCSD educators, two foster parents, two small business owners, one Emmy Award winner, one former tribal chairman, and one former member of the Nevada Attorney General's Office and current member of law enforcement. You are absolutely incredible, and I want you to know loud and clear that you are all champions of education in your own way. I would also like to just say a few words regarding each candidate, because I do believe that you should hear what precisely jumped out at me and what I am particularly grateful for. This will be in alphabetical order. So I'd like to start with Mr. Jason Bushy. For one, thank you for your military service. Your professional expertise in security is very compelling, as is the fact that your wife is a WCSD educator and a cheer coach. I very much appreciate what you shared about your experience with public charter and homeschooling, and I liked what you wrote about having an environment where every student has access to excellent educational opportunities. Moving on now to Felipe Eskamia. There's a line from your cover letter that I really enjoyed, and it was "A voice to the voiceless, hold the powerful accountable, and advocate for the best interests of the community." I also appreciate your focus on underserved communities and your awareness for modern learning environments. That brings me now to Mr. Marcus Hodges. I am very grateful for your experience as a foster parent. I think you have outstanding and diverse professional history, including your work with the AG's office, and your lived experiences with IEPs, 504s, Advanced Placement Gate, and the advocacy for CTE is very, very compelling. Ms. Monica Lehman, I appreciate your financial expertise, your experience also with multiple education systems, and the diversity that you bring to this opportunity. Thank you. Now to Tamara Oswald. Definitely a clear lifelong commitment to students. That was very, very bright, and it shone through your packet. You're also a foster parent. You have a tremendous amount of experience with special education, also within the Washoe County School District, and I loved your focus on student outcomes in your packet. Mr. Bruce Parks, again, thank you very much for your military service. I very much like how you wrote that trustees should serve the whole community and not just their district. So thank you so much for mentioning that. And I also very much enjoyed that you believe the Washoe County School District should be a model for all others. Mr. JJ Phoenix, exceptional community involvement. Also, thank you so much for your military experience. I very much appreciated your application and your focus on rural and native students. And I have that here. Let me read that, because it really jumped out at me. You said that "It is our job to create an educational system where all of our students achieve academic success, develop civic responsibility, and achieve career and college readiness for themselves, their families, and to become a productive member of our community." Thank you so much for that. And then that brings me to Mr. Tim Zisk. Also, thank you so much for your military experience, also a spouse of a WCSD educator and a longtime guest teacher. Something that really jumped out at me was that you described yourself as a calm, deliberate, and thoughtful decision-maker, and that you have answered the call time and time again to the community. So I will leave my thoughts at that for right now with incredible thanks for all of our applicants and open it up to any of my colleagues. They may or may not want to weigh in. There may be, of course, discussion after we do the rankings, but it was very important to me that every single person who has presented themselves heard what was amazing and shone through brightly about your experience and your passion from me. So thank you.
Thank you. I too want to echo my sincere appreciation. You know, in November of '21, I was on the other side of this dais, and I would tell you, this is one of the few times where it's a little bit more comfortable on this side of the dais. So thank you for your courage. Thank you for putting yourself out there. Thank you for your willingness to serve. It means a great deal, and I truly, truly appreciate that. For me, you know, anybody, any of the eight candidates could do this job. Unfortunately, we just can select one. Some of the things that were important for me was I wanted to ensure that each candidate had an opportunity to describe what their vision is as a trustee and what the role is as a trustee. A lot of folks think that, you know, we work behind the scenes and that we're crafting curriculum. You know, those aren't really the things that we do. So it was important for me to really have a clear understanding from you if you knew really what the statutory role is. And so that'll be part of my decision-making. But again, God bless all of you for coming forward, giving us your time, and putting yourself out there. I know it took a lot of time, I'm sure, to prepare, to fill out forms, to practice. So best of luck to all of you, and thank you for your service, those that have served our nation, those that serve our communities, those that teach in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, I mentioned to trustee Woodley that I thought running for office was hard. Well, I have gained a whole new respect for people in our community, yourselves that have stepped up to put yourself out there and to be scrutinized and to get up and speak and open yourselves up. That is a lot of integrity, and I just want to thank you so much. I want to thank the veterans that are wanting to serve, that have already given so much. I think that shows a lot. That shows a lot when you want to keep giving of yourself. A couple of things that jumped out to me, because I feel these same things. Ms. Lehman, she mentioned the shortage of teachers, and that is a real, real issue that we're going to be facing, and it's important that we hit that head on. So just being aware of that is so important. It's not insurmountable, but it starts with supporting our teachers. I also liked her stating that students are equipped to thrive in life. We are. We're here to educate our children, but we also need to make sure that they're prepared for life. And I think that is really, really important. That's going to make them a more productive citizen. It's going to make them feel more value for their self and be a more happy individual. Mr. Parks, I loved you addressing, because I think I even said something to this effect when I was campaigning. We've got to make sure that we're producing individuals that can fill spots for the businesses that we have here in this state. That's really important. That's the way our community is going to survive. We've got to make sure that we have individuals that are going to address the needs of our businesses in this state. So again, hats off to really seeing what our challenges are here in our state. Mr. Zisk, Zisk, I hope I'm pronouncing that at least somewhat close. I loved you mentioning the challenges that our middle schoolers have. My heart is huge for kindergartners and middle schoolers, because they're exactly the same. And we have got to really keep our eye on the ball with those two age groups, because I really feel the battle's going to be won with those two age groups. And then Mr. Phoenix, you mentioned something, and I'm not sure it's awareness on your part of what this board strives to do, but you did mention balance of governance, and we do strive for that on this board. So we do vote a lot the same. I mean, we really do, but it's because we are very aware of the need of many and balancing that over our own needs. So I did love that. And then Ms. Oswald, you mentioned supportive teachers, I mean, numerous times, and family involvement, the importance in that. That's key. That is absolute key. We have got to support our teachers and anyone who's working in the district. This is grueling work, but it is extremely rewarding, extremely rewarding, and we need the help of our families. We've got to have the help of our families and our community. And so, I mean, I'm very impressed. I think everyone that came today and is stepping up really has their heart in the right place, really knows what we need to do. And I mean, we've got to have a plan. We've got to have a plan to move forward. We've got some good things in place, but it starts with awareness. And I really feel confident that everyone that has come here today really is aware of the challenges that we are facing and is ready to roll up their sleeves. So I'm going to take it from you, Ms. Lehman. Got to roll up our sleeves. Thank you so much.
I won't repeat all that, because it's all wonderfully
I won't repeat all that because it's all wonderfully true, and thank you, thank you, thank you. On some level, I think this is fun because we get together and we really talk about things and share our heartfelt thoughts and our worries and a look forward. So, my shtick is not to mention names. I'm not comfortable with that. I shoot for concepts, okay, in a context. So, what I do is, after I've reviewed the applications, and thank you for that because I know sitting down to write an interest letter, oy vey, can be difficult. It can be soul-searching, and that's the beautiful part of it. But when I look at the applications and then when the person is standing in front of us real live, I really look for the words and the connectivities between the application and between what the person is saying. And I also look for new information because I've read all the documents, and I want to hear an extension of the interest and the resume. I want to hear an extension. And again, I think everyone knows that I have a soft heart for the military. Our son served for 20 years. I have a soft heart for education. I've been in it for almost 50 years, and so, thank you to everyone. Our community wouldn't be what it is without the variety and the diversity of everyone in this room, and thank you for taking the time. The words that I looked for and the concepts that I looked for, I looked for someone talking about our current strategic plan because it's a good plan, and it's something that we need to be familiar with and continue to grow. It's a lot of work, and it's a commitment. I looked for the word "students," "family," "employees," all employees. Every employee in Washoe County School District, every 8,000 of them is integral and important to the daily operations and the success. I looked for the word "community." I looked for "governance." I looked for the word "policy and law." I looked for "success." I looked for the word "collaboration." I looked for the word "pathways." I looked for someone who understands the importance of serving and knowing that there's a lot of frickin' homework. Sometimes the packets are 400, 450 pages, and getting through those on a regular basis, even if it's only 200, takes a sound commitment and dedication. I looked for someone who has, can convince me that they went on our extraordinary, deep, insightful website and shared some information from the website. There's a lot of information on there. I looked for someone who talks about giving our students a sound, safe, and fun education, and then going away for a while and expanding their horizons, and not necessarily sticking around, but coming back because they want to come back to a place that felt good and felt comfortable and will support them. And then, finally, I look for someone who can really articulate a vision for the future because that's what this is all about. It's about the future for our students, for our families, employees, and our community. And I will say, I heard most of those words. And to close, again, thank you, and this is going to be really hard. And I look forward to whomever is chosen, and in the words of someone else, I hope that we don't lose any one of you because you are all needed, every single one of you. Please continue to want to serve in some capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll follow up. I agree with everything my colleagues have said thus far. I was really impressed with the diversity with those that served in the military, those that served in law enforcement, those that served our kids, and also those that have and believe in their faith. I was really, really appreciative to see all that. For me particularly, what I was looking for and will be using to gauge my candidates is the desire to collaborate and the desire to serve, experience with serving, and also support for our employees. That's very important because that's the biggest asset that we have in our district, our teachers and our employees. So, thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much for applying. We really do appreciate you. Thank you.
So, before she speaks, it is with great excitement that this board welcomes our newest trustee representing District A at her first special meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, the new trustee for District A, Christine Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I first just want to say again, thank you to everybody who has served their community and is making the effort to do this. It is really scary to go up in front of people and be, all these news cameras be here. I know that it's really scary. So, thank you for being willing to serve our community in any way that you have. It's incredibly impressive. I'm a social studies teacher by trade, and I know how important it is to have people in our communities to step up and to serve in whatever way that is. I recognize a lot of people in this room because a lot of you already serve on committees, and I've seen you at public meetings for many, many years. Mr. Appelito and I have been at meetings together for a decade or more, and I love that. I think that's the best part about our community. And so, again, thank you for serving your country, for serving this community. I think my heart will always be, as a teacher, it will, it's embedded in me. And so, I think the biggest thing for me is really looking at someone who either has the willingness to learn and understand a school system or already really understands it and has respect for that system, but also knows where we need to go. So, that's really what I was looking for, and, boy, this is going to be a really tough decision because every single one of you has incredible attributes that can serve our district so well and our students. So, thank you again for being willing to put yourself out there like this.
All right. Thank you so much, colleagues. So, next steps, but before we do anything, everybody should have a clean piece of paper. J.J., do we have an extra copy? So, while we do that, I am going to recount what these next steps will be. So, we each have a piece of paper, and it has each of the eight candidates' names on it. Each of the trustees will provide three points to the top candidate to move on to the finals, two points for the next, and then one point for a third candidate. To be clear, these points alone do not automatically move anyone on. The points are only meant to provide a guide, insight as to each of our own individual thoughts, but the point totals themselves do not necessarily immediately move someone on. These points also do not carry forward to the final interviews. These are only used as part of the decision-making process for this board. We will be making that ranking, and we will be taking a 10-minute break. When we come back, every single one of you will know exactly which points each trustee allotted to every single person. You will also hear a calculation for all of the candidates who did receive points. So, there will be total transparency in how those numbers were calculated for every one of these trustees, okay? And so, on that note, we will now go ahead and make that ranking. We will fold up those pages. We will give them to J.J., and then, once we're done with the ranking process, I will send us into a 10-minute recess.
to the next round, which would be January 14th. That would be Felipe Escamilla, I don't want to get this wrong, that would be James Phoenix, that would be Marcus Hodges, and then Jason Bushy.
Yes, second to their motion.
Okay, so we have a motion before us to advance four candidates to the final round, with those four candidates being Mr. Bushy, Mr. Escamilla, Mr. Hodges, and Mr. Phoenix. Dr. Nicolet, I see your light on. Is that for discussion on the motion?
Just making sure you're awake.
favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries, six to zero. We have four finalists selected for the next round. Thank you so much. And thank you very, very much for all of our candidates.
Madam President, before you close this item, I just want to let the finalists know that you will be receiving an email from me tomorrow regarding the next steps in the process.
Thank you. And I will also take a point of privilege for our four finalists. Wherever you are, can you raise your hand, just so I can see you, because I'm going to make eye contact with all of you? Do I have Mr. Hodges? Okay, so a point that I do want to make for all of our finalists, there is the potential for the board to take action to appoint one of you at the next special meeting at nine in the morning. Later that day begins the first regular meeting of the school board's traditional meeting calendar at 2:00 p.m. The materials for that meeting will post Thursday beforehand. So I do just want you to know that in the event that this board does select an appointed candidate for the District C position, you will be moving directly into that regular meeting afterwards. Is everyone clear on that? Very good. Okay, thank you so much. All right, and so that now closes item 2.01 and moves us on now to Section 3, our closing items. And I would like to open item 3.01, our closing public comment.
Todd Bailey.
Welcome, Mr. Bailey.
Uh-oh, just make sure it's right.
If there's a cellphone policy for the classroom, shouldn't there also be a cellphone policy for public officials conducting public meetings? That should be a violation of NRS 203.090. If you're a public official and you're engaged with your robot during a public meeting, you're in violation. Why are the agendas for Washto County School Board meetings so intimidating to public speakers? Why so many threats of arrest? I've got a public information request. I'm just curious, how many people have been arrested or cited for violations of NRS 241 or 203 at any Washto County School Board meeting in the last 20 years? How many? The committee is only aware of one. That arrest cost $10,000 to Washto around us if you don't concentrate on quality of education. Yeah, I don't want anybody bullied in the hallways and I don't, you did a great job banning the cell phones in, in schools. But they still need to be able to read and write and do math and do science and do something that's gone from the curriculum, social studies. Come on, those are the kind of things that you guys need to focus on. And number one, if I'm not known for anything else, it's quality of education. That should be on every agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
John Appolito.
Welcome, Mr. Appolito.
Hi, my name is John Appolito. I'm with Protect Nevada Children. And I want to expand on what I started earlier. And Christine, thank you for mentioning it and whoever else mentioned me coming to these meetings. It's been about 14 years, I believe. And these meetings have changed a lot. One thing, I don't know how many years ago, four, five, six years ago, the attorney started sitting at the table. Before that, the attorney wasn't there. The attorney was in the room, somewhere in the back, and if they had a question, they'd call on him. Once the attorney came to the table, everything changed, for the worst, in my opinion. I only spent one weekend in law school, so I'm no expert. That's true. Intimidation. The other thing that changed after the attorney got to the table is the community was silenced. And what I mean is, public comments, I hope Todd is right about public comments coming back. Now we have public comments at the end of the meetings. And that could be anywhere from two hours to 10 hours after the meetings start. So what they've done, probably thanks to the attorney, what they've done is silenced the community. Any parent, teacher, student, community members who can't sit around for two to 10 hours can't speak. And they make it very clear, they don't want you to speak even when you can. Bruce knows that. He's been kicked out of at least one meeting. I've only been kicked out of one after all these years. And the other issue is we've got a trustee here who's, I was at the December 10th meeting when all the students, there was about three times as many people at that meeting as there is at this meeting. And they had us all crammed into rooms that was way too small. People were in the hallway, old people were standing up, and these guys just go about their business like there's nothing wrong with that. Now, this meeting, they could have it a great big room, I guess hoping people showed up. Not enough did. But those students who were trying to speak, by the time it got to public comments for them, I'd say a third of them had to leave. They couldn't wait around for even four hours. The board has silenced the community. And I know there's people up there, I know there's one that wants public comments at a certain time, sometime when people can speak. Alex Woodley, he's texting, even though he got in trouble for sexting on his city-issued device and he had to resign from the city job and his other, his other job, he's texting while the students were speaking at the December 10th meeting. Ridiculous. I, I don't even know how you could do that, Alex. I'm not saying he was sexting. He could have been texting recipes to his girlfriend, whoever. I don't know. I don't know what he was doing, but it's a very bad look. And the question was, when did people know that he had an issue before with sexting?
Thank you very much, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
We appreciate your comments.
Bruce Parks.
Welcome, Mr. Parks.
Thank you once again, Madam President. You know, I, I figured before I even showed up here today that I had about three chances of being selected, fat, slim, and none. But I understand. Voices of contention, well, apparently, need to be silenced. Doesn't matter that there's so many things that need to be addressed that are not, that that voice of contention might have been able to advocate for and get some changes made. Our chronic absenteeism, for, for instance. Thirty, sixty percent of our students on any given day are not in the classroom. You can't educate somebody who's not there. I have solutions for that. I'll keep them to myself until the next school board meeting. The rampant drug and alcohol use. Fifty to seven percent of the kids that show up to school are on something. And this isn't coming from me, this is from the students. The students have provided this information. Real solutions to some of the discipline problems. Our, our schools are not safe. You look at all the incidents of violence that occurred over the last year. No, our schools are not safe. They should be, but they're not. And last but not least, academic achievement. It's estimated that 60 to 85% of our kids that graduate from Washoe County School District are functionally illiterate. That is abysmal. It can be fixed. There are solutions. I don't understand why, on every agenda for this board, that you're not getting a report on where the schools stand as far as the academic achievement. Now, I've given testimony in front of our legislature that if you want to solve the problems in, in our education system in Washoe County and across the state, you link the funding to academic achievement. And I hope, I hope that that is a condition after this legislature's over that exists. You want the money, you achieve the goals. We, the taxpayers, are paying for a product we're not getting. We should. And it's your responsibility, trustees, to ensure that we, the people, get what we're paying for. I would love to help you with that. I have solutions. Maybe one of these days you'll reach out and try to find out what they are. Whoever the person that represents me in District C will be talking.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks.
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Hello, guys. My name is Pablo Navaduran. So I'm late. I had to work today, so I want to talk about the public comments. So I feel like we should bring back the public comment from beginning of a meeting. Three minutes straight. We know, we know we have to be limited by three minutes, so we should have to begin a public comment and then end of a public comments as well. And also, I feel like we should maybe start low day, start meeting time from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. That the most, most parent community service, I said, change to get out of work, you know, before 5:00 PM. I feel like it means time start 4:00 PM, so more can we, we'll engage. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Drew Rebar.
Welcome, Mr. Rebar.
Greetings. My name is Drew Rebar. And public comments, that seems to be a thing. Moving them to the end, trying to silence people. There's actually some case law on this. You guys don't get to silence anybody during public comment. Time, place, and manner restrictions are the only thing. And when it's my three minutes, it's my three minutes. And I've watched you guys, and you guys interrupt people, you cut them off, and I really perceive that as a violation of constitutional rights. Now, one of the candidates you had up here today mentioned specifically that she'd like to see education have the Constitution taught in our schools again. That seems to be the most basic thing that we should be teaching our children, is the Constitution. What our rights are, what their rights are as they become adults in our, our nation and our society. What they should expect from government to serve them, not them serving government. And it's very concerning the way that you guys try to cut people off and intimidate people. Let me try to intimidate all of you. I'm a very litigious individual, and I do like 1983 lawsuits, but more importantly to you is people in the state of Nevada. The Nevada Supreme Court in 2022, December, I believe, issued a decision in a case called Mack versus Williams. And just so all of you know, there is no qualified immunity in the state of Nevada anymore for state claims. And you can be gone after, after for damages. So I, I do kind of understand why you have the attorney sitting up there trying to intimidate people. But if you just let him talk, he wouldn't need to sit there and he wouldn't need to say anything because, you know, if I just really wanted to get up here and cuss you all out one after the other, crow like a rooster or whatever the heck I want to do, you got to let people talk. Whether you like their opinion or you don't like their opinion. It's called petitioning our government. And those of you that are elected or appointed, well, you're part of the government. So again, you need to listen to what people say. Don't cut them off. Let's make sure we get public comment going before all of the stuff with your business and at the end of your business again. And that's really what I'd like to say. Let, let's teach our kids the Constitution. Let's teach them how to speak in public. Let's teach them how to petition their government. Let's teach them how to be a part of their government and participate in our society. Thank you very much, Drew Rebar, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Rebar.
Cynthia Cooper.
Welcome, Ms. Cooper.
Hello. Boy, you really have a tough job ahead of you deciding on the remaining four candidates. I, I was really impressed. I decided to ask you since I came to hear the meeting. And Mr. Parks mentioned, I don't know what the statistics are, but if there's one child experimenting with drugs, that's, that's already too many. I wanted to relate to you, when I was centuries ago, in a different school district, we had a police officer visit our school in middle school and talk to us about the relative risks of all of the different drugs. Of course, you guys know back then the drugs were a different flavor and a different intensity. But the talk made a really big impression on me. And the biggest impression of all was that there are differences in the risk of addiction and the risk of impact. And I am so appalled that this country has fallen to the opiate addiction crisis. I am so disgusted by that. And I want to encourage the school district, I know you have your hands full, my goodness, literacy is so important, the Constitution is so important, but I would strongly encourage you to incorporate some realistic message that is relevant to the 12, 13, 14-year-olds at that age when they're just starting to think about experimenting. You know, to, to be very aware of the differences in the risks and to really take care. Like some things, maybe you can experim, maybe, maybe you try a beer, okay. You know, that's not going to ruin your career and our communities. But anything like opioids, that's going to ruin you for life and it will have an impact on the community. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cooper.
Ursula Burnett.
Welcome, Ms. Burnett.
Okay. So I have a couple of things. First, from the amount of votes for each person, we could see that you didn't want an opposing voice on the panel. We wanted somebody who went along with what you guys felt. Not, not all of you, because I did notice a couple of you did vote, you know, two or three votes for, you know, somebody who opposed the, the wave that's up there. Okay? As a parent of five, I think education primarily falls on the superintendent's back, you know? It falls on you to get good teachers, to come in, to make them feel that they're supported, you know? Falls on you to help the education system, you know? Falls on you to set up a disciplin, disciplinary system for the kids. Seems like kids, there's no discipline going on in schools anymore. Kids are doing what they want, when they want, how they want, where they want, except when it comes to cell phones, apparently. Got that locked down. Let's get drugs locked down. Let's teach them to write in cursive again. Let's teach them, you know, the Constitution. They do need to know what their rights are when they go out into the world. And not just to go against, to come here and speak against, you know? I guess you guys feel like if they know the Constitution, that they're going to come speak against all government. But it's to protect them, right? To know our Constitution is to protect us, right? I mean, that's the way I feel, is to protect us. Let's protect our kids. Let's teach them the things to protect them, starting with math, the English language. Let's teach them how to write and speak. And teach them history so they're not damned to repeat it. Okay? Let's, let's teach our kids, not let them fail how they are. They're like 50th? Come on, guys. We can do better. Let's do better. As a superintendent, let's get in there and do better. Let's try harder. You're kind of skating by, and that's not okay. I don't think anybody here should accept it. I don't think anybody should accept what you guys are dishing out.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. I'm not sure where the confusion lies, but we do absolutely teach the Constitution, just so everyone's aware of that.
That's all I have.
Fantastic. Did we have any email public comment for closing?
We do not.
All right. All right, everyone. That closes item 3.01 and brings us now to item 3.02, our adjournment of the meeting. And just as a reminder, we have another special meeting planned for Tuesday, January 14th at 9:00 AM, with a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees to begin no earlier than 2:00 PM that day. Thank you. And now, at 3:23 PM, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.